It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, November 9, 2020. Carl, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Present.
Ronine.
But.
Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask for a motion to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of November 2nd.
Moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have anything to add or change on those minutes, so they look good? Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Present, here, yes, aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye motion does carry. See, no one has signed up to speak at the open forum, so I will move along to our consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, a private security license for Mr. Brent Kraft. Can I get a motion to approve that consent calendar item?
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rife. Any objections on that, or else? Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark, thank you.
Aye, yes.
Mayor Shawman.
And I was denied as well, pardon me.
Thank you, Councilman Ronine. Aye, the motion does carry. We will move right along to our new business. First, we've got the first reading of an ordinance, 2011-03, setting certain fees and charges for services provided by the City of Aberdeen. We'll potentially have a first reading here tonight. Carl, why don't you tell us about those fees and charges?
Thank you, Mayor. We do this every year at this time of year to look at the 20 upcoming years' charges and fees. You'll see that there are five changes to the current fee structure. One was inclusion of language for the fees and charges by the Parks and Rec Board, so that we can incorporate that into the fee schedule, but with the explicit referral to the charges and fees that are on file with the Office of the Parks and Recreation Forestry Director. That was a recommendation made by Mark Colvin and Ron Wager. The second one is sewer charges. In talking with Robin Bobzine and City Manager Lander and City Manager Gah during the budget sessions, we thought it would be appropriate to bump up both the water and the sewer usage charges to $3.35 per thousand. As you can see, the sewer charges have not been increased since January of 2015, and the water charges have not been increased since January of 2018. As we've talked about in the past, there are some upcoming projects and improvements to both systems that we feel we need to make some minor increases to these charges. One, just to keep current with what the expenses are, and two, to prove to the state if we go for SRF funding that we can make any debt service payments if we get SRF funding. The fourth item is for Platts. Brett Bill, the Planning and Zoning Director, recommended increasing the preliminary plat fee from $10 to $20, and the final plat fee from $25 to $50. Brett says these rates haven't been changed for over 20 years, so it's about time we moved those up a little bit. And also, City Engineer Bobzine brought up the fact that some of the patching charges are outdated, they haven't been changed since January 2007. Just the cost to do this patching has gone up considerably in those years, so several of those items were increased by $15 to $20 per square yard.
Thank you, Carl. Motion on that.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Ronine and a second from Councilman Johnson. So, one quick question for you, Carl. Large volume customers as it relates to water and sewer usage, how much will that be affecting those high-volume customers?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see in the schedule itself, those fees go up as well in the same proportion as the residential customers. Pardon me. Percentage-wise, if it went up, what did I note there, that it went up? It's about a 1.7% increase, and that is reflected in all those additional charges for the bulk users.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Carl?
In light of the projects that are pending, I think these are sensible and actually necessary, so, support.
Sounds good. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine. Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible adoption of new meeting rules, order and bylaws for the council as set forth in the Handbook of the Aberdeen City Council, possible adoption of those rules of order and business as set forth in this handbook with an effective date
of November 11th. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I had identified in the council action request the history for bringing this before you. As you know, the council for years has been guided by the Robert's Rules of Order. That is a very difficult and complicated set of rules that is really not well-suited for a small body like ours. And what I have done with the assistance of looking at other cities and at some documents provided by our past City Manager Lynn Lander, have put together a handbook for the council that is a much improved, in my opinion, much more readable and workable document that handles our small body in a much fairer and more democratic manner. What we've done with the handbook is we have set out a new rules of order. We have put together a summary of motions, a statement of council values, and just so you're aware, that is an aspirational statement. I mean, it is what would be expected of the council in the conduct of its business before, for the public, for those council values. And lastly, we have a comprehensive set of bylaws that help flesh out some of the motions and other rules, and provides further guidance for the agenda, for example, for open meetings, for public comment, for public hearings, those kinds of things. I would request and recommend that the council adopt this handbook in that because the ordinance that you had passed previously that essentially took off Robert's Rules of Order as the required rules, that new ordinance goes into effect November 11th, which I think is Wednesday, and so we would ask that this effective date of this particular adoption of the handbook, if you folks do it tonight, would not be effective until November 11th, 2020.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions? I guess we'll first start with a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Reinbold and a second from Councilman Ronine. Any questions? There's one thing that I'd come to, Ron, with prior to the meeting was, I'd say in most circumstances, absolutely nothing will change. This is primarily for situations which are combative or unnecessarily long-winded or intentionally disruptive or other situations like that. From what I see, a majority of our meetings will probably continue to operate in the same way that they have. Any other thoughts or concerns or comments from the council? Then Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote? Here we go. Oh.
You know, one thing that's a change on this, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to the change or not, but it is a different scenario, is the presiding officer would have the ability to make a motion or a second, which, again, I'm not opposed to them doing it. The process, if that had ever happened in the past, would be, and I'm again just saying in the past, is if something like that happened, is that the presiding officer would have to basically move those duties to another person. Now, that's not, wouldn't be the case in this situation unless, of course, if I'm reading this right, Ron, unless we, someone makes a motion to have the presiding officer basically pass the duties over to the next.
And that's not something that Robert's Rules specifically states, is it?
Robert's Rules, honestly, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm not familiar with that. I don't know that I've looked into that issue, because I couldn't, I wouldn't.
As we had clarified at one point, that small groups, such as this presiding officers, would in fact be able to make motions and seconds and so forth at one point, because it had been a situation that had come up in the last year.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we had talked about that, and I agree with you that Robert's does permit that. I think the question that Councilman Rux has is, is if the presiding officer does make a motion, what then should be done with designation of a temporary presiding officer for purposes of that motion?
Correct, because, of course, even under the new rules, let's say someone objects to the motion, the presiding officer would then rule over if that objection was valid or not. Well, if the presiding officer is making a motion, and then someone objects to the motion, no longer is it an impartiality for that presiding officer, whoever that is, whether it's a mayor, deputy mayor, to rule on that objection. And that's sort of what gets me thinking, is, you know, the presiding officer, of course, keeps the meeting moving slowly or smoothly, acknowledges people for their right to speak, all this other stuff, but it's just something that, you know, in the past has not really been an issue, because, and not saying whether it's right or not, but the presiding officer very, never really made motions. And when things got heated or needed, he needed to make a motion or a second, the gavel was sort of passed. And this sort of predates a lot of you. But at the same point, like I say, it's just one of those things where, I think it's in the bylaws, where if we make a motion, then we can, you know, have that debate on whether the presiding officer should pass, but that's where the thing where it kind of caught on me or got into me is, well, if the presiding officer is making a motion or a second, and someone objects to it, he would then rule on that objection.
But a presiding officer could not arbitrarily reject an objection, is that true?
Correct.
Right, so you'd have to see it through anyways.
Okay.
Somebody is typing very fiercely.
Very loud, yeah.
Someone is.
You know, 38006. I'm not going to finish that number. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got an amendment to, or excuse me, ratification of police and fire union agreements for the 2021 and 2022, possible approval of those negotiated police and fire union agreements.
Oh. Sorry about that. Gentlemen, thank you for bringing it to my attention. We'll dial back to amendment to employee handbook to add provisions allowing council members access to the city health insurance plan. At a glance, it looked like the one prior, so I apologize for that oversight. Possible approval of this amendment to the employee handbook, and Joe, will you outline that for us here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we were kind of working on a plan to the handbook, a couple of things have come up, including the group insurance plan and whether or not council members are included in that. According to South Dakota law, that is acceptable. Some cities do it, most counties do it. We would just need to change our handbook to allow it, so the proposed amendment that we're recommending tonight is to add a paragraph under the Health and Welfare Benefits section that states, "City council members may also participate in the Employee Health Benefits Program. Any council member may voluntarily elect to participate. However, the council member will be responsible for paying 100% of the premium for the coverage they elect. The council members may receive single, two-party, or family coverage. Any council member electing for coverage must do so by December 1st each year, with coverage becoming effective annually on January 1st."
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Not to get too far in the weeds here on this, Joe, but I'd like you to kind of just broadly clarify to us how the City of Aberdeen itself insured it, both because I think it's a really good program and because I think it's been really a financially successful program for us.
Sure. So, employees pay in premiums, or in our case, the city has a program where single insurance or the value of single insurance is paid for by the city, so if you have two-party coverage or family coverage, you would pay the difference for that, just on the medical insurance. That doesn't include dental insurance, that's separate. And that's put into a pool, so rather than paying premiums, it's put into a pool, and then as claims are paid out, that comes out of that pool. And something that's a little bit different than normal standard insurance is you pay your premiums, and then when you go to the doctor, you pay a co-pay up to your deductible. With our self-insured, you pay 100% of the deductible, so that 2,500 is the base deductible for that single coverage. An employee pays that, and then after that, the rest of the claims come out of that pool.
Sounds good, and so, very financially viable for the city, we're money ahead in this.
Yes, it has been a very well-managed pool, there's a nice, fun balance in that. I will tell you, I've always been a little bit scared of self-funded programs, and this one here has made a believer out of me. It's very, very fiscally sound.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? All right, a motion and a second. Carl, go ahead and give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Abstain.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the ratification of police and fire union agreements for 2021 and 22, possible approval of those negotiated agreements, and Resolution 2011-03-R.
Joe, tell us about that one.
Yes, thank you. As all of you on the council know, and just as an update to the public, the police and fire personnel, the line personnel, not including the administration, each have a union agreement, which is not abnormal. And kind of as a follow-up to question, a question last week, employees are all covered under the employee handbook unless they're covered under a union agreement, and a union agreement is basically a specialized handbook for that labor force. And so, we've had these agreements in term, in place for a long time. Something that was a little unique to me is, the agreement is ratified, it's solidified for, say, a two- or three-year period, but it was reopened every year to review a few things, and sometimes those few things became a lot of things. So this year, one of the major things we accomplished that both sides were really pleased with, is we implemented a two-year agreement that is a true two-year agreement, so it's in effect for both 21 and 22, and so we will not need to reopen that in the middle and look at it. So what you're approving tonight is a solid two-year agreement that's a little bit different. Also in that, we made a 5% adjustment to the salary scale, it's one of the reasons why we were able to move towards that two-year agreement, and then clarified a number of step increases, both separating out the firefighters and paramedics away from the firefighter MT, which is our entry level, adding a step increase for the fire lieutenants, and then also increasing the steps on the police side for police officers and sergeants, and an additional piece that was somewhat substantial made clarifications to the shift differential and overtime for the police. So, both sides, both the city administration team and the negotiating team for the, each entity, were pleased with these. Both union memberships have approved these and are pleased, and sometimes it's a little difficult. I sometimes struggle with union agreements, because it's kind of like we're fighting with our own employees, and I don't like to do that, so this was a very pleasant situation, and I think we're all pleased with that, and staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. So, in adjusting for these salary increases, will be a single 5% increase across the board for these people, or will that step up over the two years?
This is a 5% for this first year, correct?
Correct. And then, how do we compare to other cities of similar size in the state? Is that something that gets looked at for these agreements?
That's exactly how this happened. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking maybe I should. It's real important, especially with our police officers and our firefighters being paramedic-trained. You know, that's training that's universal across the state, and if somebody offers them a little bit more money, they can go do the same job somewhere else, and if they're not necessarily married to the idea of Aberdeen for some reason, that can be a bit challenging. So, they brought up early in the negotiations that they thought we were falling behind, and so our HR staff did a really fast, over that course of the week, an informal survey, and I know, and Ron, if you, Watertown, Brookings, I think Vermilion, and Mitchell, so pretty much everything fairly similar to us on this side of the state, we were the very lowest at that point in time. A 5% increase took us to about the highest, and I say about, because we weren't the only ones looking at that that week. So, I don't know now if that holds us at the very top, but it made a decent jump. Doing a 2.5% wasn't going to do us very much, so from a staff standpoint, this was maintaining security. I've been told ever since I got in here, we're at the best staffing levels in police and fire we've ever been at, and we need to stay that way, and I think this is a pretty easy token to do so.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions? All right, then Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the letter of agreement between the City of Aberdeen and Helms &amp; Associates to provide miscellaneous engineering services for the airport, possible approval and authorization of the city manager to sign that letter.
Rich, I see that you're over there, what can you tell us about this agreement?
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. This is an agreement, and these are just flat rates, that we would get charged for any work outside of an AIP project that we would need accomplished. So, these are pretty standard rates, this is, I think the update does about every two years, actually.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions for Rich? Councilman Rife.
Just a quick question, Rich. You can tell me if this is standard, I'm just not in the industry, I guess I'm not sure. The hourly rate for an engineer to work, is that standard at $5,000 to $7,500 an hour? Am I reading that correctly? No, I'm not? Okay.
No, no, you're not.
Good, I thought that seemed pretty high.
Going back to school, guys.
Okay.
No, that, based on past history, that's about what they would be looking at, you know, for a total of, for the scope of any project.
For the entire project, that would be the range that they're giving you for hourly fees?
Right, and if you look at page 1 of 2, Attachment A, that, those are the hourly rates that they would charge.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
And I think it's, this is for stuff that isn't part of an airport improvement project, that's correct, Rich?
That is correct, yes.
That sort of bids separately, so this is, let's say we need just an engineer service to look at something.
Right. Let's say, for instance, we needed to, I don't know, let's just say the airport beacon, you know, it's a 1950 piece of equipment, you know, that could possibly be AIP-eligible, but if we've, if we're into an AIP project, we may have to look at doing something outside of AIP on that, you know, and talk about reimbursement at a later date.
Rich, I apologize, I read page 1 and page 2, and I didn't go down to the attachment when it lays all that out, so thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Carl, go ahead with the roll call on that letter of agreement.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the change order number 3 for the AIP 34600140-219 Airport Taxway Improvements, possible approval and authorize the city manager to sign a change order to decrease the amount of that contract by $50,889.46 for Reedy Construction.
Why is that one going down, Rich?
Not all the materials were used that they thought they were going to need, in a nutshell.
Well, good, we like to have these ones, so go ahead and...
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Reinbold and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Any questions on it from anybody? Carl, roll call.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got payment requests for the airport improvement project, payment number 7 to Reedy for the taxiway, $1,000.175, million, $847.40.
Payment 27 for Helms &amp; Associates for the master layout plan, $4,875.37. Payment number 25 for the Helms &amp; Associates Taxiway C, $20,811.61. Payment number 13 for Helms &amp; Associates for taxiway geometry, the amount of $1,988.66. Payment number 4 for Helms &amp; Associates for their snow removal equipment, $250, possible approval and authorize for those signatures. Rich, anything unusual on these payments?
No, nothing unusual. Did you want me to talk about them line by line, or, basically, the big one, the $1,000.175 is for one complete date, and we have had our new taxiway open for well over two weeks now, so, and that's also to reduce the retainage from 10% down to 3%, which we feel is fair.
Thank you very much. Take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronine and a second from Councilman Johnson. Any questions? Carl, roll call.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payroll approval for the pay period of October 25th through November 7th, as well as social security, old age, virus insurance, retirement, health, and life
insurance. I take a motion to make our payroll, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
7th, as well as social security, old age survivors' insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance. I take a motion to make our payroll, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Joe?
Yes, just a couple things. Wednesday is Veterans Day, so City Hall will be closed that day. And just a thanks to all the veterans out there in our community and around our state, very important to us. And following up on that, we did have an election, which is a, a good part of our freedom and democracy, and the city attorney insisted that I, I remind you that the city charter did pass, and it was ratified, what was the?
Canvassed.
Canvassed and, and approved by a majority of you on Friday. And so he was nervous about that process, and now he's much calmer. Something else that also came from the election that, that's not quite as calming, at least yet, as, as ironic as that sounds, is the legalization of marijuana in the state. That was not an instant approval. There are no administrative rules. There are some dates. I'm not going to go into those, but we have gotten several calls at City Hall about how that's going to work. There's going to be a lot of legislative talk. That will be in the, the session next year, and there will likely be some discussions at that level and at this level. But no, you cannot legally set up a dispensary in the city of Aberdeen yet. But seriously, we are getting a lot of calls.
But you get grandfathered in if you beat the-
I don't think that's true, Mayor. Let's not go-
That's what I've been telling people. I don't know.[1583.33]